Okay, I am going to call the meeting to order. Before we begin though, I need to have a motion to allow trustee O'Reilly and O'Connor to attend. The village has received notifications from trustee O'Reilly and is trustee O'Connor here yet? All right, well, we can make that motion now and when she joins, it's okay for her to join, right? So, received notifications from trustee O'Reilly and trustee O'Connor that they will be unable to attend. Hold on a second, let me back up. Did I hit the record button? I did, okay. They will be unable to attend tonight's meeting in person due to circumstances recognized under section seven of the Open Meetings Act that permits remote attendance. Seeing that we have a quorum physically present, can I have a motion to allow trustee O'Connor and O'Reilly to attend tonight's meeting remotely?
So moved.
Moved by trustee Browski?
Second.
Second by trustee Tanucci, and I guess go ahead and do a roll call.
Uh, trustee Browski.
Aye.
Trustee Tanucci.
Aye.
Trustee Jamil.
Aye.
And president Jacob.
Aye. Okay, trustee O'Reilly, welcome to the meeting. And when trustee O'Connor joins, she'll be automatically admitted. If we could all arise for a pledge of allegiance, we appreciate it.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution, which sustains one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, any homeowners associations here tonight? I don't see Jay Griffiths from Country Called the States. Is Bill Handel here from Woods End, either online or in person? If not, it's now time for public comment. Has there any public comment been posted to the website?
I received one that I distributed, also distributed to the board. Comments related to item 13 on the agenda.
Okay, got it, so that's been posted as well, okay. Any public comment from the room? Yes, sir?
I'm from Oakley Homeowners Association, and we have a concern next to our lot, we'll kind of make a lot that used to be a house, and the religious group has purchased it. As fast as we can tell, it looks like they're having religious services there. Our understanding is the village ordinance, you can have religious structures in residential areas, but they have to go through a process. And it doesn't look like they have, and we're just getting really concerned about traffic and people being there that shouldn't be there. So, we just wanted to know how to respond to that.
So first off, I know a little bit about the, what's your name by the way?
My name is Benjamin Mapp.
Oh, so I thought, yeah, so we went back and forth Benjamin, okay, got it. So, I mean, what we do know is that there's been an application filed, right?
For special use.
For special use to conduct religious activities, right? But nothing's been approved, nothing's been put before the village yet. We don't have anything yet, so.
We, I had the sheriff's deputies as well as myself, I've been out there three times to the property, there's been no work done on the property, there's nobody occupying the property. I had conversation with the applicant's attorney to ensure that there would be no activity there related to the special use until the special use process went through and then ultimately made it to the board. The attorney consulted with his client, came back and replied to the village that there is in fact no activity going on in that facility at this time, and they are just about done preparing their special use paperwork.
But you're seeing cars, right?
Yeah, and I also, I went on their website of their organization, they're clearly, I screenshot.
Yeah, I saw the screenshots, but we couldn't.
Screenshots are, it's a different location.
We couldn't determine that was that location, and then we had somebody go around the building too and look inside too.
Multiple times with sheriff's deputy, I've been on the property three times.
So the building inside doesn't look like what's on the video around the website?
Hasn't been altered at all, no, not at all.
So, no help or not?
The topic is, they're doing that, or?
Well, I thought like, not this past Saturday, but Saturday before, I saw like something like a teeny one car parked outside, and looked like there was clearly something going on.
Well, can you, I mean, if you see that, can we, how do, what's?
I asked the deputy to patrol there on Saturday.
But if we get, is there some way to do this that?
I would.
Call the police or something, or call what, notify us so that?
Sure, there are people, the property's owned, people can be on the property, that's not the issue. And I would tell you, having traveled across that road to have that number of cars could be a challenge. It's very narrow, there's ruts all through that driveway, there's two steel posts on the side of the driveway, so it makes it a little bit difficult to come in and out. But we will, we'll keep an eye on it, but by all accounts and their attorney's communication to us, there's no activity. But we'll, we'll keep an eye on it.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention, so, thank you. Any other public comment tonight?
I do have a question.
Sure.
My name is Mark Green, I live over in Martin Woods. It's just a simple question, I'm wondering who is responsible for like the maintenance and upkeep of Long Grove Road where it comes into Route 53?
Well, go ahead, somebody want to answer that? We are, and we're working on it, right?
Yep. Part of the this year's road program.
It is part of this year's road program, we have engineer Perry here, and he's just confirming that we were going out for bid on that, so, right?
Striping was getting to be a kind of, I almost saw an accident there because of the striping not almost being a non-existent, so I was just kind of curious.
Yep, no, no, thank you, we have it in our plan for this year, so bear with us a little longer. If there's any emergency repairs, those will.
We do those under regular.
We'll do those, so if, hopefully if possible.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks for, thanks for being here. Any other public comment tonight? All right, Rita, are you here by any chance? Are you here? I think that's you, who's the 208, 8839, Rita, is that you? We can't hear you. Rita? Okay, I hear muted if you're here, so I know that, hopefully you got the login.
Yeah, that's your number.
That's your number, right, okay. Rita, we can't hear you, if you could speak up, that would be great, I don't think I can.
She's muted.
Asked to unmute. Are you there? I think you might have to push, what is it, star six? How about try star six? Star six, Rita? Okay, I give up. Okay, so next item on the agenda is the public safety report. We, I see sergeant Keith Kaiser here tonight, do you have anything to share with us?
Lieutenant.
What? Oh lieutenant, I'm sorry, did I say sergeant? I'm sorry, lieutenant, I just promoted you.
There was something really crazy going on, had an uneventful chocolate factory move parked, only one person was arrested for an outstanding warrant, and somebody that didn't like him saw him there and called us. Other than that, it was all great.
Anybody have any questions during the afternoon?
I'm afraid to ask anything because it's been quiet, it always gets me worried, so I don't want to say anything, so. Yeah, thank you, thanks for knocking, that was great. All right, thanks for the report, if there's no questions, we'll keep us moving. We have a consent agenda in front of us, and there's several items on that agenda. It's consideration approval of the May 2023 bills and pay warrant, consideration approval of the meeting minutes from the May 23rd, 2023 meeting, subject to non-substantial revisions, consideration approval of an application for license to conduct a raffle on August 4th and 5th at Buffalo Creek Brewery, consideration approval of special event application for the Long Grove Prairie State Half Marathon, 10K and 5K Oktoberfest September 30th, and then consideration approval of special event application for the Long Grove Turkey Trot 5K and 8K on November 23rd. So is there any questions?
Yeah, I have a question about eight and nine. So, on item eight, the Prairie State Half Marathon, we're expecting 1,000 people to attend, and we'll have 10 Lake County deputies, but for the Turkey Trot, we're expecting 3,500 and we'll have seven deputies.
Like, it's the length of the route.
Pardon?
It's the length of the route.
The length of the route determines the number of deputies, not the attendance?
Yeah, it's traffic control.
Okay, answers my question.
Okay, great, yeah, Peter Sarkowitz is here, right? So, if you have questions, he's in the back there.
Okay.
So, thanks for joining, all right. Any other questions?
Same thing.
What's this?
Looked at the numbers and had to go back and take a second look and figure it out.
The only thing that I noticed that the route wasn't published in the board packet for the Prairie State Half Marathon, and I couldn't find it online either, so imagining it's the same as the last time?
Yeah, I thought for certain we had the map there, but I'll check.
Yep.
I know for the Turkey Trot, I saw the map.
Right.
For the other one, I saw just the setup at the starting gate.
Right, it wasn't there, so.
Get that map out.
Get it out to everyone, but does anyone want to make a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay, moved by trustee Tanucci, anybody want to second it?
Sure.
Second by trustee Browski. I, we don't have to do a voice vote, but let's do a voice vote.
We have to do another roll call.
We'll do a roll call.
Consent agenda.
Consent agenda, okay, roll call please then.
Trustee Tanucci.
Aye.
Trustee Browski.
Aye.
Trustee Jamil.
Aye.
Trustee O'Connor.
She's here, I can't hear her.
She said she would unmute herself when she was called in.
Okay, trustee O'Connor, can you unmute yourself, please? Star six, it's unmute? Okay, keep going.
Trustee O'Reilly.
Abstain.
Okay. Got everyone?
So, does that, Bill, you need to?
Three, two, three.
And then abstain, that's.
That's a yes, so, so.
Okay.
I, I'll vote aye if you need me, but motion carried. Okay, so where is Taylor, is he here tonight? Because we have the village planners' report as the next item on the agenda.
I can.
You want to hit it?
The planning commission met on June 6th to discuss the applicant's request at 3305 Old McHenry Road for a garage setback variance by a vote of two to one with one abstention because of being a neighbor to the applicant, it's been recommended to be denied. That has to come before the board. Right, we're going to have a resolution, assuming that the board gives direction, we'll have a resolution for next meeting to formally deny it. The Robert Parker Coffin, 215-235 location, Joni's Pizzeria, special use permit for outdoor dining, that's item 13 on the board agenda tonight. There was debate, discussion, and conditions that were attached to the recommendation to proceed and grant the special use by a vote of four to zero. Phillips Estate Plan Unit Development, there were some questions regarding stormwater, those questions were handled by the engineer at the meeting. Phillips Estates, Dick will be working on some documents on regard to Phillips Estate. This is the final planned PUD. Also, Jeff, what did we find out about the sewer?
Didn't you send a memo out on the sewer?
The, yeah, the sanitary sewer in Glenstone is owned and maintained by the county.
And there was a resident that inquired about that, is that something we're going to get to that resident?
Yes.
Okay, yes, because that came through today, that was one of the questions. Was it thought that, can't remember, that it might have been privately owned, is that what it was?
That was the belief.
The belief, but it's not, it's publicly owned, okay, got it, all right.
The architectural commission information's the same that, it's the same that was from the previous meeting, but it's convening again on June 19th. Brothers Field, there has been no activity or communications from the developers of the Brothers Field project, either moving a PUD forward, change to the PUD forward, or any use pertaining to the farm, no, no, that's been brought forward. We don't know where we sit with that right now, according to the feedback I received from planning. Keep Rentals continues to move forward with the architectural commission, they're making some tweaks to what the AC requested, that'll be going before the word on, I'm sorry, the commission on June 19th. And then there's a 3993 Orchard Lane, new single-family home that is going in front of the AC. This is, we just had two other homes built there last year where we had some issues related to garage placement as well as style and anti-monotony code, and that's where we're at right now.
You know, and the rental place, they're still planning to move ahead, right?
Yes.
Okay, all right. That's at five them in arts over there on Route 53, right at Lakewood Road, so, okay, good. Any questions? Well, we're our village planners tonight, hope he's having a fun time. Okay, we'll keep us moving, the next item on the agenda.
More than this, are you kidding? Impossible.
There you go. The village engineer's report, presented by Jeff Perry.
So, the engineer's report's on board packet, few items to highlight tonight. Robert Parker Coffin Bridge, sustained a little bit of damage, it'll be the rest a week and a half. I talked to Carmichael Construction this morning, and they're going to be out there this week to assess all the repairs that are needed and start fabricating the materials. They've come up, they perfected the process of getting all the materials before they get here, so they're staying there, so you can just put them up when they get here, so, getting the repair work done here in the next two weeks. The road program, still waiting on IDOT's approval to go out to bid for that, they had a few comments that came in last week, so, I'm not going to count my chickens before they hatch, but the silver lining could be that contractors are ahead of schedule this year, and they're looking to fill up their plates, so hopefully that's good news for the big climate of that.
What takes so long?
Sorry.
Yeah, no, go ahead.
I have a question that you probably can't answer, but I'll ask it anyway. We mentioned a moment ago, the Prairie State Half Marathon is on September 30th, and it's setting up on Archer, it's going to be completely redone. Reasonable to think Archer would be completed by the end of September?
Yes, the way the specifications are set up, just backing up a step, this is a joint road program between Long Grove Village and Ula Township, and Long Grove, they're roads done first.
Very good.
My question really was, what takes so long, I dot? And maybe that's a rhetorical question.
The other thing is with both the remaining at Robert Parker Coffin Road at 83, and then also Long Grove Road at 53, you've got to go to a lot of different bureaus because of traffic.
I see, I see, okay, got it.
Hey, let's see here, the checking road traffic coming, manager Jackson, if you want to add to it, you can, but manager Jackson met with Buffalo Grove about a week and a half ago, impressed the urgency of getting that cut through data, so. Hopefully a commitment made that we'll get that later this summer.
The village manager at Buffalo Grove just returned from a short vacation, and I made sure I was on his call list.
Excellent. So what's the deal there? Do they not have the data, or are they unwilling to release it? What's going on?
They indicated that president Jacob was at that meeting, and they indicated that the data was there and that they would take care of it, so.
Yeah, we did a president's meeting, so, not with them, and Greg set it up. Since Beverly Sussman is no longer there, figured it's about time I meet the new village president, so, just got seated, so, Eric Smith. We had a conversation, several different things that were, good positive conversations.
Village Hall Expansion, there was a design kickoff meeting on Friday, attended by myself, manager Jackson, trustee Tanucci, and Wolf Architects, just to kind of review the past discussions with the board, make sure that all the guiding principles were there discussing the questions that Wolf had. And as far as timeline, looking at getting the schematic design done here, June, July, detailed design, a couple months after that, and then bid late this fall, which my mind's an aggressive timeline, but yet a good timeline, sets up for digging foundations and things like that over the winter, which as we've talked about, there's a high water table last winter with standing, typically winter when it's frozen is a great time to deal with high water tables. So, manager Jackson and trustee Tanucci, want to add anything to that, or move on?
I distributed to the board earlier today, the guiding principles as well as the proposed timeline that we discussed at that meeting. We're meeting again on June 19th, we hope to get a more defined schematic for distribution to the, to the board. We had some comments of some things that were missed in that, in the drawing that we wanted to see, but then we'll go room to room as part of the project and talk about specifics as we move this along.
Yeah, I was unable to download the file, but I'll try later, it was, was it a big file?
No, it's two pages.
Just written, or?
It's, yeah, two separate Word documents.
Okay, got it.
Arlington Heights Road, to continue the discussion from the last board meeting, there's two exhibits in the board packet to highlight the turn lane that we were discussing at the last meeting. As a recap, Lake County Division of Transportation is requesting direction from the village Long Grove if they would like the turn lane from Checkered Road onto northbound Arlington Heights Road, strike as a turn lane, which is the first exhibit, you know, it's got the, whereas only it's got the left arrow, storage lane, or the other option for the village is to strike that whole thing without doing, without the turn arrow, like cross, yellow cross hatching in there. So, a couple exhibits to make sure that it fits the location. I did follow up with Lake County Division of Transportation, they did not complete any pedestrian counts at that intersection, nor provide or produce any anticipated usage of that crosswalk over there. So, the exhibits do show that in the morning, 50% of the cars that go through that intersection do turn left from eastbound Checker to northbound Arlington Heights Road, 35% going through and 5% making the right, so there's a pretty heavy movement to turn left there. Backing up a step, right now, the intersection is two lanes, one lane each way, there's no dedicated right turn lane, no dedicated left turn lane. As part of the project, the intersection will be widened to three lanes wide regardless of the village's decision on striking the turn lane or, you know, striking it out as a median, so, that's the direction, or that's the decision and the request that Lake County has made.
Option one makes perfect sense, option two makes no sense, that's my opinion.
Option two meaning?
Option two meaning, striking it.
Right, we should put the left arrow and make it clear that it's a left turn lane.
Well, the issue really was, we were looking for feedback on safety too, so, you know, it basically is that, so we're not trying to encourage cut through traffic, right? So that was the thing, do you want the left turn lane or not? But then people probably would, probably use it as a left turn lane, so it doesn't matter, right?
Might as well make it safe.
Yeah, that was the question.
I think option two would be confusing for drivers, you'd have people in the left lane that are turning left, people in the left lane that are going straight, and it just becomes a mess. Agreed?
Yeah.
Any questions, Bobby, do you have anything for us?
No, I agree with the left turn.
Okay, all right.
At the Hissip Road, the widening project, Lake County Division of Transportation, pre-construction meeting was held, May 31st, and their desirous of getting the contractor out there to start the work, but we've got some public drive capability, relocations that need to happen first, ComEd, NICOR, AT&amp;T, so they're languishing just a little bit behind, so while they do want to start work in late June, no commitments on that. Also with that, manager Jackson and I are coordinating a neighborhood meeting to alert the residents of Friarcrest, Brattlewood, Eastgate, Arlington Heights Road, and then some accounts in contact to village-wide of the project and the schedule and potential traffic impacts from that. So, I think we land it on next Tuesday at 5 o'clock, yeah. 5 o'clock, Village Hall. Towner Subdivision, the drainage project and the Lake County Stormwater Grant, manager Jackson and I had a very productive meeting with Lake County SMC last Wednesday with the executive director Kurt Wolford on that, and he was able to shake the money tree and let us know that there's $60,000 available for stormwater infrastructure repair grants. So, we are going through the final stages, we're counting eyes, crossing keys based on our conversation with them, to get that application in by the end of the week. Lake County Board, SMC Board will meet then on July 5th, the meeting after 4th of July, we impressed that, you know, that meeting should happen, and, you know, vacations and no firework injuries, and stuff like that. So, that's the rough timeline on that, we impressed that we're looking to have that project done by the end of this year, so.
They worked, they worked very well with us on our, they knew, they knew the importance of this project, so.
Then, assuming that comes through, then at what, that 1st July meeting, we'd be in a position to put it before the board for a formal vote, for the matching piece of it?
Yes.
Okay.
Just real quick, item 17B under miscellaneous, this is the Pulitzer violation, the owner has let us know that they've removed all the material that they inadvertently placed in the wetland bunker, so we're scheduling a meeting to get out there and take a look and verify if it's closed off that violation. Then, number 19, the board chiefs have been working with the village in contact about the landscape deficiencies over there, we pressed for an update here in the last week, haven't got anything, but once that is received, we will communicate that with the board. The only other thing is trustee Kritzmeyer noted, lots of rules going on in the village.
Also, Route 2283, myself and the village engineer will, we provided dates to IDOT in order to have that, that follow-up meeting. So as soon as we get the dates, make sure everybody's aware of it and whatever comes on the meeting.
With that, happy to answer your questions.
Isn't there another item on here that you need to talk about that's the next item on the agenda?
I have one, one question on, on the report, and that is, the Grove, what kind of penalty did they get for not getting permits?
They've got a notice of violation, right now they're being set for the administrative hearing, I can get to you, trust, or trustee O'Reilly, the date of that. I was the one who went over and did the red tag of the, of the project, we got a call from one of the neighbors who said they were digging up the concrete, and I also contacted their attorney to tell them to cease and desist with the work until they pulled their permits. They stopped the work, they've got a land survey, and they're supposed to be coming in for permits sometime this week, but we are, we are putting it to the administrative hearing officer.
So, they're just kind of getting their hands slapped, I mean, how much money did we spend on them, how much drama did we have with them, and they continue to do the same thing?
There's, there's a limit on what we can do on some of that, but absolutely, I understand what you're saying, trustee.
Well, if you don't get consequences, you continue to do it, it makes me wonder why anybody gets a permit. I'll let it lie.
All right, thank you. I do want you to go back to your report though, because the next item on the agenda, there's item 58, can you explain what happened there, Friarcrest?
With Friarcrest?
Yeah.
So this is a project the owner applied for the permit way back in 2018.
Okay.
And the project scope was, she had a pond in her backyard and wanted to reconfigure that to protect her house, move the standing water further away from the foundation, and also convert that from a wet bottom detention basin to a dry bottom detention basin, so in dry conditions it won't have any water. So, in dry conditions, it won't have any water in it. So, worked through this, uh, reconfiguring detention basin, takes some engineering, uh, calculations and, and review, and we noticed that, uh, this detention pond takes, uh, water from the area to the south and was not encumbered with a stormwater detention easement as part of the plating of Briarcrest. So, now with that and under the now current, uh, Watership Development Ordinance regulations, it needs to be protected by, uh, a plaque. So, that's what we have before us, the, the plaque of a detention pond easement that, um, puts incursions on the easement or on the detention basin basically to preserve the stormwater, uh, detention capacity, um, and doesn't allow the current owner or future owners to modify that, uh, without, uh, approval from the villages, the, uh, enforcement officer of the Watership Development Ordinance.
Okay, so let me, I'm a little slow here on this one. So, in twenty-eighteen, they wanted to make some modifications to it. Um, so they applied or contacted us?
Yep.
A, as we started reviewing it, we noticed this deficiency, and now we're going to make a permanent easement on their property?
So-
How do they feel about that?
Uh, the owner is on board with it.
Okay, 'cause it's going to help them with the problem or that they have, or?
Yeah, so, you know, early on, uh, we identified that that was going to be what was required should that project move forward, and they agreed to-
Okay, so they improved, they knew that they were, all eyes open?
So, just to kind of, the timeline, twenty-eighteen, it was approved in twenty-nineteen, pandemic happened, it was constructed, and then they had, uh, some issues with the way it was constructed, and we find the, uh, during the last two weeks, it got to the point where the Asbeld survey was approved, so now it's appropriate time to approve it in the easement.
Okay, so that's the next, very next item on our agenda, which we just discussed at, uh, discussion, consideration, approval of the resolution of a detention pond easement, five-two-two-zero, Briarcrest Lane. So, I mean, what I'm hearing is that, uh, there's no objections, uh, this is all approved, and it, uh, we're now, uh, like complying with the, uh, Stormwater Management Act or whatever it is, right?
Correct.
Yeah. So, anyone have any other questions?
I do have a question, you guys may laugh at me. Why, why do we require childproof fences around swimming pools but not ponds in a backyard?
Give my opinion on that?
I mean, I just, just thought it was a new, interesting thing, you know?
I guess from my standpoint, the first thing I think of is, like, a detention pond has got a gradual twenty-five percent slope on it, whereas a pool has a vertical, um, drop-off.
Well, it have to be, there's ponds in town with big old boulders sitting on them. There's no answer to that question, I was just curious, you know? I mean, we spend so much money protecting kids from pools, but yet ponds, we just go, eh, the pond.
Well, remember, we, um, there, there was some confusion with the code that changed, right? So, we, um, you don't necessarily have to, uh, have a fence around it, but you have to cover-
I'm saying, but it'd still cover, but, okay, so let's cover the pond, I mean, you can use the same argument.
That's an interesting idea.
Right, to prove.
Okay. Motion made by Trustee Barowski, go ahead.
Uh, but point number one, so, um, can you please update what's going on with this Robert Parker Coffin Bridge? Recently, we received an email, everybody's copied, by a resident from Indiana. Of course, she's not a resident of Long Grove, but I'm sure everybody got that email. So, I want to just know what the status of this repairs, because I'm new on the board, so I would like to know a little bit detail about what you mean, the repairs from recent bridge accidents being coordinated and what's the progress and-
The re, the repairs are to, the repairs are to the facade. There is a, um, piece of aluminum siding gutter that hit one of the, uh, the facade, put a hole in it, so that, that's what's being replaced. Structure-wise, there's been no damage to, there's nothing to the structural integrity.
It's just the wooden planks.
Can, can I back up a little bit? So Jeff, maybe jump in, but the way it was designed was that, that the bridge itself is built like a brick shithouse, part of the expression. It has iron that is, that is put into the pavement before the bridge, after the bridge, and internally connected to the superstructure, and in addition, there is steel plate that faces outward, so if anybody hits it, basically they're damaging their vehicles and not really moving the superstructure.
I got that, in future, in future. I know the repairs have been done multiple times since that matter of, like, uh, you know, concern for all the residents here. So, in the future, what steps are we taking apart from it? I know the damage for the steel structure will be there, but are we foreseeing anything before the bridge, like a steel structure?
Yeah, we did, we did a study on, uh, possible solutions. We put that together, presented it to the board a year ago. Um, the part of it wa, and, and this was driven, uh, by trustee O'Reilly and, uh, uh, we looked at a potential annunciation system that would, uh, signal bells and whistles should somebody get too close to it, and it was too big of a size. That was, had a pretty hefty price tag on it, uh, not counting, just upfront costs, not counting maintenance. There were some issues where we talked about sign fatigue, and we had too many signs. Should we start removing some of the signs? We, we haven't finalized with that. Um, we, we get the constant, uh, recommendation, and I pro, and President Jacob, I probably, every time the bridge gets hit, ten, fifteen, thirty emails easy I get on, on responses. One of them was, can you put a bar down?
Yes.
Like at a drive, like at a parking garage or a McDonald's. Two issues with that. One of them has always been aesthetics, and it's been pushed back from the, uh, downtown business district about the aesthetics. The other part of that is when people say, put it out twenty, thirty feet away from the bridge, when you're coming from fifty-three to the bridge, you still have garbage trucks and school buses that have to turn around and get on Shafer's, so to put that, you couldn't effectively put that bar there. Um, so there's just a, and we, we, we continue to look at it, and I continue to desire not to hear it from the press every, every time they say-
Ever officially contacted, uh, Google and Waze?
Yes.
Yeah, are we, that's a great question. Are we still-
Any response, uh?
Yeah, they took us off for a while, and then it popped back on, and then we went back and visited it again, and they popped back on.
Well, there's a little bit more than we did there. We actually had to declare the road local.
Yeah.
In order to have it removed from the route guidance, right?
Yeah.
But, but it keeps coming back, and I don't know if anyone's checked recently, because every time we get hits, it seems like it gets put back in.
So, the bar option is, uh, just because of the concerns for the aesthetic purposes, but-
No, 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 also the-
Well, that's one of the reasons.
Well, no, there's also no place, good place to put it, because you have to have trucks on both sides to get through. The trucks go down to gravel Shafer Road for garbage-
Yeah, as soon as you come up to that bridge, where you're right across at that stop sign, and you look at the bridge to come out, you know, to turn, you, you have to turn there. So, to put a bar, um, right there, I mean, the, the bar would be lower than every truck, garbage truck and bus that went by, so.
There was something else that was being looked at, to do some optical illusion striping to, weren't we going to do that?
Yeah, yep.
Is that still in the works?
Yeah, so it's, it's in the works with pricing and things like that, we just had the product forward to the board.
Because every time the bridge gets hit, the village board gets attacked by the citizens.
Oh, yeah.
That is a, a reasonable concern.
Mm-hmm. A very stupid person sitting in this chair, you're right.
But, again, you all are.
Thank you.
We need to come with the-
Just ask everyone.
-solution rather than focusing on repairs. I, like, I got this email, I'm sure everybody's copied from that, and I think, um, you know, we need to do something, you know?
She's from Indiana, she has a lot of time on her hands, that's all I'm going to say.
And then might have been auto-generated.
There, and, and, and trustee, there's been, there's been, before I've gotten here, you know, it's been two years since I've been here, before I, people were looking for solutions, and there was just what was acceptable, what was not acceptable, what was practical, what wasn't practical. We continue to look, the frustration that we receive from sta, as staff about every time they get to-
It's all over the network, that, uh, you know?
Mm-hmm.
The citizens are commenting very, uh, you know, and I can totally agree, some of their comments are probably in line that we are spending a lot of money on repairs, but not coming up with a concrete solution, and that we had to-
Oh, we're not.
We're not spending the money.
It has to be a separate thing.
Yeah, we're not spending the money on the repairs.
Concerns-
The repairs don't cost us anything.
Have a public meeting designed to kind of have that particular agent of item to be discussed and take the opinion of, uh, you know, people and then come up with a solution.
We'll do whatever the board directs us to do. We pr, we provided, uh, a number of solutions, so.
George, you had a, if you raise your hand.
Well, if you want to make some lemon on lemonade, uh, lemon juice on lemonade, the Village of Long Grove has gotten tremendous free marketing name recognition. It's a hollow Sunday preview, first page a few, a number of months ago, relative to Long Grove. You can't pay that, that's amazing. So, yes, it's embarrassing to get all this free advertisement.
And at eleven o'clock Sunday morning, I was getting calls, uh, multiple dialed from the Daily Herald.
Yes, I, I can tell you that we, we've made the news in LA, as in California.
Well, we were on the cover of the Wall Street Journal too, so that's not good either, so, there you go. But, again, I, I, I hear you, we, we've debated this issue so many times, and we can bring it back. The, the, the good thing is that the cover is working as design. That's the, that's really the moral of the story. It's keeping trucks off for the most part, and, um, it's sustaining major damages. Last one, there's, you know, a piece of aluminum popped through the boards, otherwise there would be nothing, you couldn't see anything.
And I think it's fair to say that, in every instance, we've had insurance claims that have, not against our insurance, but against the driver's insurance, that have covered the cost of the damage, so.
And then some things are just going to be uncontrollable. The party bus that went thi, this, uh, this week to, uh, under the bridge and had its, uh, air conditioning unit tore off, like, like a sardine can.
Yeah.
Um, turns out that, uh, the deputy who took the report, submitted the report, the driver acknowledged that the bus was eleven feet tall. Our sign says eight-six.
Wow, so he had an idea that somehow magically it would shrink to-
Hold on a second, how, did he, he never made it in then?
He ripped the whole, the whole thing just still up.
Yeah, but it's, but I, I physically measured it, it's not, at the center there, it's less than ten feet, so.
He told, he told the deputy it's eleven feet, that's what the deputy put in his report.
So, anyways, in the middle, it's less than-
So, math challenged, drivers have, uh, to be aware.
Just to be on the record, uh, you know, I would like to propose a public hearing on this particular issue with the board. Just wanted to put it on record, uh, to seek suggestions. I know it has been debated before me getting elected here, but I want to see, uh, another round of, uh, public hearing on this particular event, uh, to seek the suggestions and proposals, and if something comes up reasonable, uh, you know, like to step back as it comes, but-
We'll take that under, we'll take that under advisement. If the board wants to do it, we'll put it on the agenda, if the board wants to do it, so.
I, I also suggest maybe a discussion with Jeff privately, because we've evaluated a lot of options. Like you said, that decorative bar, but to the point, we need to get delivery trucks and service trucks in and out and sort of put that off the table. Um, the he, the headache bar, the yellow bar hanging in front.
Yeah.
We had temporary bridge in place, we had pictures of people getting out and lifting the headache bar just to continue to go through. So, we, we've done a lot of evaluation of different ideas, bells and buzzers to warn the driver, lights to warn the driver using photoelectric. The neighbors filled the room saying, we don't want lights, we don't want buzzers, we don't want stuff pinging us all night long as people are going through there. So, we had the residents come in and fill the hall and say, hey, we don't want that. So, we've had a lot of discussion and a lot of options, and maybe Jeff can kind of refuel on some of the analysis.
Well, that's, uh, fine and well, but the village has to come up with that valid explanation of what we did, like, we have such a state this, we have such a state there, and it has to be explained to the people, because the things-
And I've written so many emails, Dr. Jamil, it's unbelievable how many responses are, so I say the same thing every time, like, oh, I didn't know that. I don't know how many, I mean, you're going to, no matter what we do, unless we shut down the road, which we could do and not allow traffic, we're going to have that, or move the bridge, it's going to get struck. You know what I mean? So, I don't know what to tell you.
If, if I may, um, I'm so glad to hear somebody else who is concerned about our, um, our not caring, but, but what people think of us. People think we're the dumbest people on earth, that we don't do anything. And, and quite honestly, when you mentioned that I was the driving force, more things I suggested got lost in the shuffle than ever got presented to the board. And, and so I think it's a great idea. Let's bring out what we did, let's bring out what we didn't do, and, and let the public know. If the public does not know that there is a steel structure under that bridge, they're terribly uninformed. They need to know that, and a public hearing might bring it to them, and at least we'd be doing something. So, now there's two of us.
Sounds like we have a committee.
The, Jeff, would you be, um, the package that, the solutions that were presented to the board some time ago?
And the things that were not presented to the board.
You know what I'm talking about, Jeff? And then as well as the, um, annunciator and, and the, uh, lighting project that, uh, you, me, trustee, uh, O'Reilly and the other gentleman, Scott, I think, I don't remember his name.
Stop, boy.
Yeah, if, if we can get that information like Dr. Jamil sees, at least that way you can come familiar with the, with some of the solutions and-
So, so would we be afraid to have the public hearing?
Nobody's afraid, Bobby, I just think you're going to fill the room with people just throwing ideas out, we've already vetted. I, I mean, we've got a lot of smart people thinking about this and looking at it, and, uh, I mean, there's actually nothing wrong with-
But, but nobody thinks it's us.
Oh. I mean, you know, your comments said you're, you're glad to see somebody else concerned. We're all concerned, we all hate these-
And that's why I said, I didn't say caring.
Monday, you know, Monday morning at the office water cooler, I got to hear about the, the party bus, that's all everybody was talking about in the office, but.
Well, I got a call from France.
All right, all right.
All right, let's, um, let's keep us moving. Um, anything else on the village engineer's report?
I have a good question.
Sure.
On the last meeting, um, Jeff, you mentioned something about checking the colbert at seven zero six one, Closeage Road, the possible collapse, you know, statement was made that it would be checked out.
Yeah, Ken, Ken Meeks reported that it, that it was a problem, we're reaching out to the owner to ha, have them take action on it.
Okay.
Yep.
I have a question, did we act on item twelve?
No, I haven't gotten that far yet, I'm trying to get there. There's a motion to approve by trustee Barowski, and I was, that's where I was going to move to. So, who wants to second it?
Second.
I'll second.
Uh, I'm going to give trustee O'Reilly the-
That's fine.
The delayed vote there.
That's fine.
Seconded by trustee O'Reilly.
Trustee Barowski.
Aye.
Trustee O'Reilly?
Aye.
Trustee Jamil?
Aye.
Trustee O'Connor?
Star six, please. Okay, keep going.
Uh, trustee Tanucci.
Aye.
All right, motion carried, um, and trustee Kritzmeyer's, so, so she's to make it, so. Okay, so the next item on the agenda, discussion and consideration, approval of an ordinance granting a special use permit to authorize outside dining at two fifteen, two thirty-five, Robert Parker Coffin Road, Joni's Pizzeria of Long Grove. Um, do you want to help set this up?
The, uh, a couple of years back, right after I arrived, we, we did a inspection of the downtown for property maintenance issues, and wanted to move those issues along. One of the property maintenance issues observed was at the building, the Old Mill Pond, uh, which is now Joni's Pizzeria, where a ledge or almost like a little porch outside the sliding doors was rotted, and appearance-wise, it was not acceptable to the standards of what we want in the downtown. So, that among other locations received a notice to do some repair. Uh, the owners of that property have, uh, chosen to add on to their deck space, their outside dining space by creating a second deck. The deck is fifteen by thirty-nine, it would match the northern line of the existing deck. The existing deck is, uh, twenty-two by twenty, eighteen size. The petitioner for the special use required for that deck, um, currently uses the existing deck for outside dining. The existing, or the current, um, special use for that deck allows outside dining Sunday through Thursday till nine-thirty, uh, Friday and Saturday till ten-thirty, uh, and it's been in operation going back to the days of the Mill Pond. Uh, so they, they would like to not only have the deck, but also expand their outside use of that deck for, uh, for dining purposes. The zoning board of appeals, uh, approved it with conditions, uh, they approved it by a vote of four to zero. I had presented to the board- I had presented to the board some comments related to the recommendations, and if the board wants, I can go ahead and address those right now. There were five points that came out of the PCZVA. One was no lighting or amplified sound to be used. My response to the recommended conditions were the lighting, not to have lighting is not practical. It's from a safety standpoint for not only the patrons, but for staff as well, there's got to be lighting. Now, that lighting can certainly be adequate to allow for dining, soft lighting, something that's comfortable. It certainly doesn't have to be spotlights or anything along those lines. Amplified music, I had talked to the property owner. They're not using amplified music now. In fact, the original special use did not allow for amplified music. The next issue was the plantings of parking lot to be installed. I don't see why there's an issue with plantings being put in. I have not gone into detail. I believe the planting to go in is to mitigate any sound or visual from the open space of the parking lot, unless I'm incorrect on that. Mike, am I right on that? The next one was the landscape plan to mitigate the sound and light, I'm sorry, the recommendations of the AC to be incorporated with the final design. That's without a doubt, that should go ahead and proceed, based on my response to the conditions. And the landscape plan to mitigate sound in sight, it may not be necessary. There is contention that it is. A sound survey that was provided into the board package, it was item thirteen E, shows that the sound is not a significant problem. The acting chair went out to the site and found that the noise was at a level that was tolerable. The applicant has an aerator that constantly runs, would also help mitigate some of the noise that would be happening. I was asked, I asked the question of the property owner if the aerator was functioning, because it had been, but I wanted to make sure it wasn't in and out, and it is. So, the noise issue may not be as prevalent. We also have, well, the demand for the outside food and beverage services increased since COVID. People are looking to go outside. We know the downtown has made efforts to grow the outside business, but we have to find that balance of being able to have the businesses be successful in the downtown, but also not detrimentally impact the quality of life of the neighbors. And I think much of this is being done. We, outside dining, the board supported a pilot program for outside dining, which is currently underway. There continues to be food offering needs for the downtown. That's why the board, in a meeting ago, approved food truck ordinance. The staff's been working closely with the downtown businesses to come in compliance with property maintenance issues. This was a property maintenance issue. To the credit of the petitioner, the applicant, there have been a number of properties that the applicant owns that has had property maintenance conditions that needed to be corrected, and generally speaking, they've been done on a timely basis and without hesitation. And so, from staff's standpoint, they're making a financial investment to bring the level of the buildings up, and that's important from the public safety, or health and safety standpoint. I make those responses to the conditions, recognizing the concerns of the neighbors, and also trying to balance the need for our business community, especially in the downtown area, to be able to push. Broken Earth is open, later hours than the proposed nine thirty. The village board just approved Brothers Field for this season, which will be operating on Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays till eleven o'clock. We know the brewery has a later license. There are a lot of places that contribute to sound, other than a dining area. If there are complaints related to the noise, or the hours of operation, or the use of amplified music on the outside, we will respond to any complaint as we normally do.
So, what we have before us right now, right, is a recommendation from the PCZVA. We also have, we have a resolution that we're trying to pass, and so, you know, the question is, you know, do you pass it as recommended by the planning commission, or do you make modifications to that? And so, I think that's what's being presented here, right? I know that the owner of the property, who is present here today, Mike Okun, representing the owner, right? Oh, yes, Ken also as well, right, representing the owner. They don't want to lose their hours of operation they have right now for the outside deck, but this is written, they would lose that. And I think the issue, there's also a resident that's nearby here, right? That's Chris, right? His concern is noise and having to live with that if there's more people outside and, you know, if it goes later than, you know, disturbing his ability to relax in his own home. So, the question is, how do you make it all work so that everyone's happy? I'll tell you that I am one that goes out to eat after nine o'clock a lot, so things that close at nine are not good for me. I usually work late Friday nights, and that's usually when I go out is, you know, eight thirty o'clock, eight thirty at night, and I'm not going to want to go in at nine, so. And I'm sensitive to somebody that lives nearby there. So, I don't know if you want to have a discussion here about what you think and what have you, but that's what we got before us. We approved this, and then he still has more work to do. Ken and Mike still have more work to do, because they've got to go through the AC and get the final thing approved. I don't know if anyone went out there and visited and took a look at it. It'll be a nice improvement, having that deck in there. It's also, you know, beautiful view, too, when you sit out there and look over the pond. So, I'll open it up for comment, and whoever wants to start first. Or nobody.
And I will say.
Yes, you are.
Hearing what's been said seems kind of pointless, but here goes.
Go ahead.
When Midwest Capital proposed this expansion, most seniors thought that there was a significant reaction by neighborhood and the residents of Long Grove. And you all have those documents in your packages, I understand.
Yeah, we're.
And the neighborhood does not want this. This is a disruptive business for us. Does that mean the owners try to be disruptive? No. Does that mean people try to do the right thing? Sure, but it's the nature of the business. This expansion will only put more negative impact on our neighborhood. That being said, people talk a lot about residents, and they say, "Okay, we love this house." But I agree with you. Well, my two neighbors have been there forty years. My wife and I, Debbie, we're the new kids on the block. We've been there fourteen years. I believe there's a responsibility that businesses have as well. If they're going to move into a town like Long Grove, which has rules, a lot of businesses, we don't allow it in this town. Business that is going to move into a location like this, that is so close to residential, they may come to a point where, hey, I might want to do this, but I can't, because thirty feet from where I want to do this, there's Long Grove residents living. But that kind of seems to get thrown out, maybe with the bathwater, because I understand the village wants business, and we want more revenue, and we want more tax dollars, and the businesses here want to make more money. I get that, we all get it. But there kind of gets to a point where it gets a little unfair to the people who have invested in this community for a long time. And this proposal went through the zoning commission. The zoning commission was crystal clear. There was a lot of angst in approving this project. This is a tough one. Yeah, I know. It's really close to the residents. What does this mean to the people that live there? One of the conditions that was proposed was that significant landscaping would have to be applied to reduce the sound and to reduce the visual impact to the neighbors. I want to show you, Taylor's not here, so I can't call it up on the, if I may, call this up. The proposal that has been put in by the petitioner eliminates this, these trees and these trees.
No trees are being removed.
Cut down.
None are being cut down. One branch because it goes over the deck, one branch on one tree.
He's not cutting down, that's what Mike just said.
Nothing's being cut down.
Okay, hang on.
Seven trees, though.
All right. These trees here, that provide visual and sound abatement, are shown to be cut down on this document. Now, this is the document that's presented. Those trees are here and here. They are not on the official document. Those trees are here and here. Those trees are here and here. Those trees are here and here. So, is it conversation in the meeting, or is it the documents?
Can we see that drawing?
Yeah. Trees are here and here. So.
We can make it conditional.
Yeah, we can make it conditional on the tree state, so that's not a problem.
Yeah, this confuses me because.
We can make it conditional, the trees have to stay. That's not a problem. We can write it in the resolution. Yeah, we can do that, not a problem.
Yeah. Well, I'm only going on the official record.
Got it. No, but we can put that.
Not random conversation. I understand what you're saying.
So, we can make sure that's included.
We can put it in there, yeah.
Whatever we pass.
Yeah.
This project was approved the second time by the zoning board, again, with significant noise reduction and visual landscape included. The petitioner has decided that whatever is there is good enough, and they have said that, I don't have it on here, but two random bushes, whoops, sorry, over here on the parking lot will be put in. Two random bushes over here on the parking lot has nothing to do with the dining area, has nothing to do with noise abatement.
Yeah, well.
Two random bushes over here. So.
My understanding from the noise report was those were supposed to help reduce the noise from the parking lot.
Exactly.
You know what? Okay, you want to hang your hat on that? I've been there fourteen years. I invited zoning commission to come to my house, sit on my deck, and experience what life is for us.
I believe the chairman.
No takers. There's a difference between sitting on the road and sitting at my house. There's a difference between conversation in this room with that door closed and conversation in this room with that door open. This might sound like minutia to you, but this is our life, and it's the life of our The fact that you want to extend till ten thirty at night, to make our life miserable if you want.
It's the way it is today, though.
It's actually how the current rules.
There's only the day that it stays open till ten thirty. On the weekends, nine thirty on the weekdays. On Friday and Saturday only.
Trust me, I know. Trust me, I know. Is the owner out there trying to move up the crowd and make them scream and yell? No, they're not. The people are people. When you put people in that situation, you can't control it. The reason there was so much negative impact from the homeowners, and maybe that doesn't matter in this town, I don't know. But I will tell you that the zoning board, the people that presented their argument in front of us, this guy didn't want to build a garage, this guy wanted to build a garage, okay? The other homeowner didn't want to look at it. So, we were saying, you don't need to look at that. But here, you don't think that's important.
I, no, that's not correct at all, so there are different circumstances.
I was there for the whole thing.
I, you know, and I cheated and I listened in, so it was recorded, so I did cheat and listen in. So, I understand that situation, which is a little bit different, right? And it sets a zoning precedent in that particular scenario. Yours is a little bit different, because the use has already been approved. It's already been approved there, and all they're doing is repairing and adding on to the deck that they currently have. I would like to give the petitioner some time to say a few words, too.
Can I say one more thing?
Yes.
One of my favorite comments was, two of my favorite, two favorite comments, and then I'll be done, was to start the first zoning meeting, Chairman Wilson said, "There has been significant negative impact for this project." That seemed all right. The second thing that was stunning is one of the members of the committee said, "Well, these people have been suffering through this for years. What's the difference if there's more noise?" That's him in minutes. And you know what? It is a difference. It really is. No one's asking for this business to be closed, okay? Nobody. But this will make it tremendously more uncomfortable for the people who live around this location. And I really hope we'll side with homeowners in this town.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Becker. Appreciate it. I'm going to just give a moment for Ken or Mike Okun, the petitioner, to speak.
Hello, everybody. President Jacob, board members, Mike Okun, I'm the proprietor of Joni's Pizzeria. I want to just talk to you on a couple of things that Chris said here. At the first meeting, it was the architectural meeting. We did have a couple of neighbors come, I think there were three or four. They didn't really speak, they were there to support. But after that meeting, they all came into Joni's and said, "You know what? We had to go. He was our neighbor. We had to go support him. We're totally for you doing this. We don't ever get any noise. We're not worried about it, and we will not be at any meeting going forward." We guess what? Are they here? They're here, because there is no noise from Joni's. Chris has a problem. He does have a problem. He has a problem with Long Grove. He doesn't have a problem with Joni's. He has a problem with the noise in Long Grove. The parking lot is Long Grove's parking lot. The owner of the parking lot doesn't lock people out where you can only park there if you're Joni's, or your only park there is the Broken Earth, or if the only park there is your, you know, the personal lot. By the time Joni's open, the lot's filled. We don't have space for our customers, and I've actually looked in, and we've tested valet service, which we're probably going to do, and they're going to run them to Archer, bring them back, and forth. Now, the issue is not coming, if you guys read the report, it's not correct. Maybe you can read the report. I hired an audio expert to go out three days in a row, on a Tuesday, just to see the difference, on a Friday, and on a Saturday, right during the busiest rush. I think there was twenty-four people on one deck, twenty-two on the other, seventeen on the other. And he tested, and what he tested was quiet noise, forty-eight point five decibels. I think he said the average was fifty, and it was literally right in his house, but next door, because we got permission from his neighbor, and we, I went one time to watch, and the audio expert went the other, too. Stood right up by the lady's kitchen, she was in her kitchen. Stood right up by the lady's kitchen, she was in her kitchen, she granted us approval to do that. And all you heard was the fountain. You did not hear the people on the deck at all. What you heard was car doors closing and people talking as they were walking to the parking lot. And that's why he suggested a couple more trees by the parking lot would suffice. But he still felt that the fountain and the noise from the fountain was desirable unless he doesn't like bump noise. And that's where the noise was coming from. I mean, a year and a half I've owned it, I took it over January of 2022. He's never come to me once complaining of noise, ever. But what Chris did do over the years, he went and complained to a very nice elderly man that runs the morgue's chocolate, it's called Broken Bridge now. He has speakers right outside, that's the old red building that was the old Long Grove construction in. And he has benches there and a couple of speakers. Well, people sit on the benches and he's got the speakers on low, but Chris went over there and yelled at the poor guy three times to turn the music down, and it wasn't even loud. And I know it came to you, Bill, I think. And Jim would never do that. And I, it's more of a Long Grove issue, like I said, it's not a Joni's issue. The chair lady of the zoning and planning board actually went out and listened. And I don't know if she told you guys or if it was in her notes or anything else, but she had no sound coming from there either. So we're doing everything we can. Another issue that I don't know if all the board members know, there was a deck built when this building was built. There's wing walls that were there and everything else. Back in 2002 or 2003, I was told the owner didn't want to spend the money to redo the deck, so he cut it back and then put planters, which, you know, I even said to you, Bill, I don't understand how the village allowed him to do that because somebody could walk up and just fall right on these planters, they're only a foot off the deck. I mean, it made no sense. When I took it over, I triple locked those doors so nobody can go out.
I think that was part of what they highlighted as far as the maintenance rushing.
Yeah.
But I mean, I'm just trying to move this business forward and do what the customers and everybody around wants. They want to sit outside in the summer, everybody loves staying out. COVID changed our lives. I mean, we'd rather sit outside now, even if it's like 50 degrees, because people, you know, and the other restaurant, oh, can you turn the heater on so I can sit outside? And we're just trying to appease our customers. That's all I ask is to, hopefully you grant us what we need or want to do, and we can go forward.
All right, thank you for that. Let's bring this internally back to the board, so I'll start wherever, whoever wants to start. I don't know, trustee O'Reilly, you want to, do you have any comments or anything?
Um, no, except to say what I think all of us always feel is empathy for the residents, but also a strong support for our businesses. So in this case, I'm going to fall on the side of the business and hope that the neighbors can be accommodated.
All right, thank you for that. Can I go around the room? No? All right.
I'm going first.
I'll go first, I'll go first. I'm sorry, I'll go first. Um, if you pull up the recordings of all the meetings, I think you'll know that I have a tendency to side with the residents, frankly. I moved here for dark skies, quiet, I don't want tract homes, I don't want lights. If I wanted that, there's other places to live beside Long Grove. So I fully, you know, I really appreciate those comments. And, you know, you mentioned at the beginning, you know, that kind of talking on deaf ears, you're not, I get it. I like quiet, I like peace, I like dark skies. I'm not sure, frankly, how to vote on this, I don't. I get both sides of it, I understand your concerns and the opportunity, but honestly, if it's my backyard, I don't want it, really don't, so I don't know how I'm going to vote, I don't.
You probably don't want my neighbor right now, the daughter's been having parties at midnight. They're hanging out in my driveway, dog doesn't like it, so, but that's, I got woken up at 12 o'clock.
Well, we have laws for that too, so.
We'll deal with that eventually.
My neighbor keeps putting a cone in the middle of the street.
A cone?
Mm-hmm.
Why?
To slow down traffic because we have more families with younger kids that play on the street.
That's a good idea. So what do you have to say?
I tend to agree with Bobby. I do have empathy on both sides, I really do. I do think also that there is a going concern here, and they're trying to address the maintenance, and they're trying to expand it, you know, to meet the needs of clients. I don't think it makes any logical sense to have a deck that's only open till nine with no lighting, when the rest of the restaurant is open till 9:30. That makes no sense whatsoever to me. I am sympathetic, I mean, I hear the festival across Arlington High Road. Seven o'clock on a Saturday? I don't care. You know, I mean, it is what it is. I heard it at midnight on Sunday, I called someone, but seven o'clock on Saturday, it's just kind of part of the liveliness to me. So I understand that.
I will say, nobody owes the view of their next door neighbor's lot, you know what I mean? Like when we were going through the stuff with the school district on the solar panels, you're not owed the exact same view that you bought 15 years ago. Things will change within our codes, within regulations, within curriculums. But, you know, it's our duty to try to figure out how do we balance everything for all 8,000 people.
All right, thanks for that feedback. Dr. Smith?
I agree with O'Reilly over there. I think there are some concerns with the residents' noise and stuff. If there is a way out to get into the middle, I think we are allowing 40 patterns if that can be met halfway and see if the citizens' concerns over their neighbors particularly, if that makes any difference. Otherwise, I go with siding with business because I agree with Bob O'Reilly that, you know, timing wise, I'm okay, nine o'clock.
Well, nine o'clock versus what it currently is today, today it's 9:30 and 10:30. So 10:30 on Friday and Saturday, 9:30.
Yeah, weekends, yeah. But I think.
So you're saying that.
I agree with both of you.
If they add the deck that they could maintain the hours they're accustomed to with the rest of the restaurant.
Yeah, what I suggest and propose, if there are major concerns with the sound and other music and stuff, if we cut down from 40 patterns to 20, will that make a solution between the neighbors and the business?
I can comment, the additional seating is only 24.
I must have missed it, there's a 40, mention of 40 patterns there.
Yeah, you're saying it's 16, and this would add 24.
24, okay. So I'm okay with that.
Trustee Tanucci?
So I have a question. I'm sorry, I forgot your name, the resident.
Chris Becker.
Chris.
Where is your home with respect to, say, the parking lot? You know, there's sort of a round end of the parking lot. Imagine at the clock, which number on the clock points to your home?
On the other side of pond.
Direct, directly.
Directly north.
We're straight north.
Is your, is your the house that you can see your deck, there's like a tree opening a clearing and you can see right straight down?
Yeah.
That's yours here, it's the big, the deck up on the hill?
No, no, that's the brown house where they did the tax on it. It's house. He's got tons of flow holes.
Oh, you're on the one, a little bit to the right then.
We got a couple last year.
Got it, thank you. He showed me the overhead, I got it, okay. So would it be possible to put some evergreen trees along the new deck to shield the view between the deck and his house?
From the photos from the planning commission, which we showed, there's just some foliage.
Uh, let's see what I.
There's already trees there.
Are those trees that lose their leaves in the winter? Of course, you're outside in the winter, so maybe it doesn't matter.
They're low trees.
They're. They're low trees?
They're not going to grow.
Okay.
Also an issue with being close in proximity to the pond and what will really grow there and what.
Yeah, if you watch the video, you can see all the trees up there.
Yeah, that's what.
Oh, here we go.
Yeah, you know, let me see if I can share this too, hold on a second, let me, uh.
So you see where I was going, I was asking if there's some way to provide more vegetation to block the view and perhaps some of the sound.
Well, we have to modify the deck to keep it closer to the building, so it won't compromise any of their existing ground cover.
Here's my chair, where's the chair screen?
Anything sizable close to the edge of that pond.
Uh, gonna check the thing in the bottom left.
I can't remember how close the pond is to the deck, is it pretty much right there?
What's wrong?
When you share it, there's some.
Oh, yeah, it is really good.
It gets better for the sharing.
That's where it would be, so it is pretty close. And I see the two.
Well, I mean, you can, I mean, make it bigger if you want.
The trees that you see there was where the, it existed, the original deck went to those trees, there's the pylons right under those trees there.
But we opted to keep it close.
Okay, well, that answers my question. So I agree, if the duck goes in, you need some lighting. The lighting should be restricted to only the Joni's property, it shouldn't shine across the pond. I'm sure that's reasonable, right? No amplified sound, if you're, if you're not putting amplified sound. Having one deck 9:00 PM, the other deck different hours seems kind of odd.
They ought to be pulled the same hours.
Recommendations of the AC should be incorporated, I think we're all agreeing with that. Not to, not to repeat what everybody else has said, but I do feel for you, I feel for what you're going through. I went through a similar thing before I moved to Long Grove, I know firsthand. I had 24 buses parked about 100 feet from my backyard, filled my home with diesel exhaust every morning at 6:00 AM. It's one of the reasons why I moved. I have sympathy, I truly do. I'm with Chris, I don't know what I'm going to do.
I don't know what I'm going to do. I have another question. So lighting that Mr. Jackson introduced here, Long Grove has really aggressive ordinances that lighting cannot extend off a property. How, I'm uncomfortable with that.
Um, I think what we're saying is some kind of lighting for safety reasons, but not to, you know, not bright lights.
Right, it can't be dark.
Can't be dark, it's just some kind of safety thing.
We can't create, we can't allow something.
But not bright lights.
Enough lighting for people to walk safely.
As long as I don't want to see it.
Yeah, you may not see it.
I don't want it shining on our property.
I think that we can.
We already get a lot of that from the parking lot, same, safety cars, you know, there are some, um, there has been some mitigation on the lighting over the years that have blocked some of it out, which has been very helpful.
Right.
But you don't get it from the existing deck, and that, you know, we're saying that the existing deck, we're going to just put it on the walls, those soft yellow lighting.
Well, okay, put it on the wall, it's shining this way, how about put it on the deck, shine it towards your building?
I can do that, but it's closer to you then.
Shining that way.
I mean, we can figure out the lighting so that, it's a safety issue, that's what it is, so.
It's an indirect lighting.
Yeah, we can figure it out, so it's not.
Light can come out, it can surround, as you guys said.
Right, for safety.
Okay, it's a difference between.
Air conditioning is going to go down.
And light will come out.
I mean, maybe the lighting could be embedded into the railings or something so that it's.
It's just like the reference.
Yeah, indirect.
From the planning says no.
We hear you on that one.
No sound.
Right, yeah, makes no sense, no sense.
No, but there just has to be some kind of safety light, not so it's shining in your face, but if it's the way it's turned, so it's going the other way, I think we could accommodate that.
Right, there should be definitely that, so the light is shining.
We're throwing you a bone, we are throwing you a bone, it won't be in your face, it won't, yeah.
We just want it, it's just got to be enough to be safe.
Yeah, well, um.
It's not our job to design it, it's our job to say, it needs to be so that it's safe and it's illuminating the property, the business, not you.
And that's the thing, that I understand, you said the trees aren't going to be cut down.
One limb.
I understand that, but the official documents show those trees being gone.
We'll write it into the resolution.
So that'll be in writing?
We'll put it in the resolution.
Ultimately, the official document will be what, if anything, the village board approves.
My trust level is low.
No, no, we're going to write it into the resolution tonight.
These resolutions are the final say.
That's it, that's the document.
This is the final. That's what gets signed and gets sent to the, by the clerk, and now it becomes all of our code.
And is enforced.
Yep, so it's whatever we, whatever we approve tonight in writing, what gets written down is what, that's the approval, doesn't, doesn't matter.
Regardless of what the other document said or didn't say, right?
Right.
So the last thing I have to say is, what's the compromise on the time? When we had the zoning meeting, there was no resistance to 9:00 because they said people don't sit out there anyway.
Concerned, well, when I did the recommendation or the response to the conditions, I looked at a number of things. First of all, Joni's has a 2:00 liquor license. They're not asking to operate until 2:00. I had the concern, because Chris and I talked about some of these items, and what I used as the guidance was what currently is in place, and that's 9:30 someday through Thursday and 10:30 on Friday and Saturday. Because the current deck allows that, that's part of this, that is part of the special use for that one. I didn't suggest to the board, and it's all the board's decision, I didn't want to suggest to the board doing 11:00 where we've got some of the businesses that are out there till 11:00 at night. I didn't think that was fair, and especially where the location of it. And in my conversations with the property owner, I think he, I hope he understood where I was going with that, and that we had to find a compromise in order to coexist with the residential.
So what's fair in your eyes? The ordinance says 11:00, but I'm not, I'm not asking for 11:00. Eight, you know, 9:30 during the week and 10:30 on the weekends. 10:30 is late, I'm sorry. Eight, that's what we have now.
I'm like you, I.
I'm like, I'm the one out at night, so, and I'm up early too.
I used to be the one who was reaching into sunsets at 8:50.
I'm the worst, I'm up early enough late, so I'm sorry.
What's the impact to your business?
I'm not.
Sorry about that.
It's the existing hour, and the new deck is diner, 9:30. What's the impact to your business?
Uh, probably have some servers quit because they wouldn't want to work that deck, so I could never get anybody to work that deck to finish off the shift.
So help me understand, when you have a server, you would assign them to the deck?
Yeah, one goes to here, one goes to here, one goes to here.
So when that deck closes, the server assigned to that deck, it goes home, basically, you don't need them anywhere.
That's way clunky.
The lack of consistency also makes it difficult.
All right, so let's, let's do this one thing at a time, so.
I'm not saying I support it, I'm just trying to understand.
Trying to figure a highway through this. So obviously, you, we want to prove this tonight, there's enough consensus, right? So let's just work through the points, right? So no amplified sound to be used, check, right? Lighting, we need some wording, so help me out.
My suggestion would be that lighting shall be limited for safety purposes without offsite impact, subject to the review and approval of the ARC.
Architecture Commission?
Yeah.
So for safety, limited to safety purposes without what was the last?
Without offsite impact, so it's not going to be glaring elsewhere.
Gotcha.
Okay, is everyone okay with that?
Yes.
So you won't see bulbs shining in your eyes from across the pond, right?
Bobby?
There'll be shielding of some kind?
It's ground floodlights.
She's nodding her head, right, Bobby, yeah, okay.
We can do the ground floodlights.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so, so we got those two things. The two proposed plants at the parking lot to be installed, that was there, everyone okay with that? Okay, so that's an easy one, I'm just trying to figure the easy one. The recommendations that AC be incorporated in the final design?
Yes.
Final design, right?
Yep. There's two other items down here, so let's, a landscape plan to mitigate the sound inside of the diner area.
Is that meant to say that the deck should not be able to seat upon?
Well, that's the thing, if you, if, that would be the.
Isn't that part of the appeal of the location?
Yes.
And that's kind of the direction I was going, could you put something there? But it looks like, A, there already is something there, and B, there really isn't room to put anything else.
With the landscaping plan, I would recommend to the board that we put language in there about not cutting down the existing trees.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I was just writing down, I was getting there, Greg, so, ahead of me, I was trying to get to this. So I want to make sure we've got this, the landscaping plan as it is, what's recommended, are you? Yeah, so I was just writing down, I was getting there, Greg, so, ahead of me, I was trying to get to this, so, so I wanna make sure we got this, the landscaping plan as it is, um, what they're, what's recommended, are you in favor of it or not?
Yeah, I'm in favor.
Uh, hold on a second, maybe say it another way, the, the plan that was laid out to put more plants in front of where the deck's gonna be, is that, are you in favor of that? Or leaving what's there, there?
But, uh, we are amending a little bit on the lights, right?
Right.
And then, uh, the timing wise, do I have a good consensus on that?
Yeah, we haven't gotten to the time yet, I'm trying to like work one, get everyone, yeah, same, same time.
Majority decides I'm okay with that, I'm flexible on timings, nine thirty, ten thirty.
Okay, you're flexible on time, so hold that thought, what about the, the plants, um, the landscaping plan, so-
Are we saying put some more landscaping?
Correct, do you wanna put more landscaping?
Shielding?
Make them put more landscaping in, or alternatively, make sure what's there stays minus a branch?
Well, at a minimum, make sure what's there stays-
Okay.
For sure, is there room to put more landscaping, it would make a difference?
Is it gonna change the sound?
That's what I mean by would make a difference, yeah.
Are you an audio expert, no?
Well, the issue is too, that so, um, the, the, the view of, from the inside of the building and the deck would be obstructed by the plants come up, so.
I don't see the need, but it sounds like the bigger challenge is the parking lot.
Exactly, what else can the legislature just probably elected for those two along the fence line and the parking lot area to deflect from the van noise? Which seems to be a source of a lot of noise.
Is that the right answer, two trees?
What we were told.
Are those evergreen trees?
Alright, so let's, so, um, let me make sure, um, you're okay with, um, not, not adding plant material, but keeping the plant material that's there, right?
Yeah.
Same?
Definitely keep what's there.
Okay.
Um, and add more, that would be good, if you can't, I understand.
Okay, so maybe add, um, Ian?
I do not stand to add additional landscaping around the pond, but it sounds like the parking lot would help.
Okay, and that's there, okay, Chris?
No opinion, I'm not a landscape designer.
Alright, no opinion, Bobby?
But not add.
Not add, okay, sorry, so we got, we kinda like, sounds like we're not adding, but keeping what's there. Alright, now the hours, so the hours stay the same, nine thirty to ten thirty, or should they be reduced? And let's just go around, I think you said, stay the same?
Stay the same.
Okay.
Question.
Question.
How does it work, so if you have a ten thirty posted close time, does that mean they get seat patron at nine twenty-nine and go through full service with them, or does somebody shoot people out at nine, hour ten thirty? How's it actually work?
Vic, you wanna give us the answer?
Uh, technically, the business should be done by that hour, so they presumably are gonna be timing it to complete their last cycle of patrons to end at that time.
That's the deck hours, because the inside is open later, like you can shoot-
No, that's the hours of the whole, the whole business.
The kitchen shuts down, you turn out at four, drinks, finish their, their meals, and then- That's your answer.
I think so, okay, thank you.
Uh, Bobby?
Oh, the same.
The same, okay, alright, so, um, Vic, can you-
Can I ask one question to the petitioners, because maybe I misread the plans because of the copy I had, it's kinda fuzzy.
Yes.
How many seats are on the new deck? Twenty-four, okay, then the number in the ordinance is incorrect.
Okay.
The number should be fifty-six, not forty.
That's what I'm reading here, that's what I saw.
Right, it says forty, that was my bad eyes, um, thank you for the clarification, um, but with the existing thirty-two and the new twenty-four, that's fifty-six.
Okay.
It's not that my math is bad, it's my eyes are bad.
Can you help, um, so, if somebody's gonna make a motion, can you help us, um-
Yes, it, it would be a motion to approve the ordinance as presented with the following changes, one, the lighting will be, uh, lighting will be allowed, uh, for safety purposes without offsite impact, subject to the A R C review and approval. The hours will be consistent with the existing hours, which is the nine thirty and, and ten thirty as, as outlined in the, uh, the management's report. Um, the landscaping will be as presented in the ordinance with the two additional trees, as recommended by the planning commission and as proposed by the petitioner. No trees will be removed, it's gonna be a new provision, and we'll be modifying the seating from the forty that's shown in the ordinance to fifty-six.
Okay, moved by trustee Kritzmeyer, second by, by trustee O'Reilly?
Another question?
Please.
Does the A R C evaluate the light density that actually is, um, transmitted off property? I thought our, the way our code is written is that we actually have a, 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 a number, we have some, a number in our code that says X number of lumens, or-
Correct.
Or something.
Right, that, that's gonna be information that the petitioner is gonna have to present to the A R C to demonstrate compliance with that-
Okay.
Added with the additional language that we talked about, that it's going to make sure that there's not gonna be any glare impact, to the extent that any is otherwise allowed under the code.
So it's, okay, so it's more than just the light bulbs aren't shining that way, there's actual, actually-
Right, and, and we can, we can add, although it's, I think it's implied, but we'll add, consistent with, uh, village standards and, uh, with the other limitations.
Okay, thank you, appreciate the clarification.
If, if that's acceptable to-
Well, we're still good with the two motions, I mean-
Is that an acceptable clarification? Bobby?
Yes.
Okay, so moved by trustee Kritzmeyer, second by trustee O'Reilly.
That's a good point about lumens, is the same requirement in decibels for sound also in your code?
Uh, we don't have authority to regulate decibels, uh, under the Illinois Environmental Protection Act, that's something that the state controls.
Interesting.
We have a live motion here, um, by trustee Kritzmeyer, second by trustee O'Reilly, roll call please.
Trustee Kritzmeyer. Aye. Trustee O'Reilly?
Aye.
Trustee Borowski?
Ask someone else.
Trustee Jamil?
Aye.
Trustee Tanucci?
You put me in a spot now.
Had O'Reilly on the phone.
She already said yes, didn't she?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So you already got it.
So, but, but that's okay, I'll take the spot I was put in. Fifty-one forty-nine. Aye.
Oh, yes, okay.
Oh, boy, I would stain, you don't need my vote.
Alright, that is the motion carried, thank you, thanks for being here. Thank you. Well, it's gonna, uh, you're trying to get it done this summer.
Further proceedings before the A R C, so when that gets done, is when they'll be able to get started.
When is when I start the first night?
Um, nineteen to June, but probably by August in July. Much, thanks for mentioning those two.
You're good, you're good, okay, so, alright, so let me keep us moving here.
I misread those plans as far as what the number was.
Um, we have the, uh, village president and trustee report, all I'm gonna say, as you already know, and I, we met with, uh, Buffalo Grove, uh, new Buffalo Grove president Eric Smith and Dane Bragg, so there's several conversations that, uh, we had, and, uh, um, okay, got it, so, um, no problem, I think we're wrapping up here. Bobby, I think that's the drop, so, if you need, if you need to leave, uh, uh, okay, so, uh, that's all I have, I'll just go through, trustee Borowski, do you have a report?
There's a SWALCO meeting coming up, uh, Thursday, I have no idea what's in the back, I haven't read it yet, so, uh, I'll be participating in that. I asked manager, um, Jackson to print out a, um, a document today, but it's, the print quality is not good, so we're gonna resend it to you by email, but it is a E C L U document, a, a commentary regarding the flock cameras, and the, their commentary on what their recommendations are for municipalities to try to legislate, should HOAs or the municipality itself try to implement flock cameras. And it speaks to, um, the flock company having the ability to track and monitor and surveil people, because as it spreads its network out across the country, the user agreements that it, that it signs with the HOAs allows it to use that data for other purposes. Um, so they collect the database, or data, put it in a cloud, and now they're able to track people through their network. And the recommendation by the A C L U is to limit that availability for flock to be able to do anything with the data outside of your community. Um, the other thing it talks to is, um, surveilling and storing of images, and, um, it, the copy's terrible, so don't even look at it, because it's missing pieces, but it basically says that if the idea is to check a plate against a hot list, check the plate, delete the data, don't store the photos, don't store the data, get rid of it. So they recommend a maximum of three minutes of data storage to the flock system, um, before the, you have the ability to check a plate, come back with a thumbs up, a thumbs down, delete the data out of the system. Um, so it has recommendations on what legislation should be like, what the code should look like through municipality, and I'd appreciate it if everybody just took a look at it, because it's really an interesting document in terms of the data, um, that flock has and its ability to use it. And just the last thing, um, it also recommends that any data that's collected locally should stay locally, so in other words, if it's a hot, if it's a hot car, go to the Lake County Sheriff, Lake County Sheriff can go, okay, we gotta go dispatch a vehicle, but after that, Lake County Sheriff shouldn't be allowed to do anything else with that data and forward it on to other agencies or other places. Um, so it, it's really an interesting article, and I think it kind of solves at least part of the, um, the trepidation that I've been having with the, um, with the concept of the surveillance. So if you can take a look at it and resend it, I'd really be appreciative, because I, I, I think it speaks to good suggestions on how right the code and how the HOA should engage with village and, uh, law enforcement.
How'd you find it?
Thank you.
I'm sorry?
How'd you find it?
Uh, just random internet, you know, I punk, yeah, random, I, I just ran into it, and it's A C L U, and I don't always agree with A C L U, but it makes some-
Great, thank you.
So if you can look at it, I appreciate it, end of report, thank you.
Thank you, thanks for the report.
I'm sorry, one more thing, um, so, um, manager Jackson is also, um, doing a very, uh, good job of considering, uh, the current sheriff's contract and the upcoming renewal, and we're working on doing some evaluation of that, as well as some alternatives for the board to consider, so appreciate Greg's work so far on that, and, uh, could be coming to you soon in a, in an email.
Do you have a question?
Yeah, I will, but it's terrible, we, we need to, I need to give you like the email-
Um, cheeky, worst case, email, email me or something, and I'll get it.
I was gonna say, I could send it to you.
Yeah, it's a terrible, printed copy, it didn't-
Thank you, okay, uh, anything else, no? Doctor Jamil? Trusted Jamil? Uh, trustee Kritzmeyer?
Go for it.
Uh, trustee O'Connor's not here, uh, trustee Tanucci?
Um, yeah, last Wednesday, the committee that's evaluating the invasive grant requests met, there were four requests evaluated, no decisions were made, other than the decision to go visit each of the four sites personally, and evaluate them, and see them in person, and with the information gathered during those site visits, then make a decision as to whether to recommend the grants or not.
As a practice, do you think they'll always do?
Be determined, uh, the committee felt like this is a new thing, we're just kinda figuring things out as we go, um, we'll give it a try, see how it goes, and, um-
What was, what are they gonna do?
Visit the site, so there were four-
Oh, visit the site, yeah.
Yeah, there were four requests made, instead of making a decision based solely on the application, we want to go and physically visit each site, to look at what they plan to do, and what they're planning on removing, and understand in person what's going on.
Hey Vic, do we have any concerns with that, or?
And if we have access, you know, request for access, um, that, that's not troublesome, I mean, obviously, there's the risk, but if it's gonna be on somebody else's property, it's more their risk than ours-
Mm-hmm.
-um, of injury, but, uh, we would have general liability insurance that would cover that.
So we would do it with their permission and invitation, and presumably, they would be physically present, so they could explain-
Okay.
We missed here, we're doing that there, blah, blah, blah.
Okay, thank you for that, anything else? Um, uh, village manager Jackson?
Just some quick updates, kickoff meeting we already talked about with the, uh, world architects, preliminary fieldwork for the, uh, twenty twenty-three fiscal, or twenty twenty-two, uh, fiscal year, twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year audit has started. Uh, the distributions of property tax dollars have already been made, uh, we are sitting on the H D L G V A's distribution, uh, based off the direction from the board, until we receive their annual report, uh, reaching out to, uh, the president of H D L G V A to remind him that their reports do-
Greg, since you're so short of ass, if you want any hands on helping with audit.
I appreciate that, Ann, thank you. Um, trustee Borowski, we talked about, uh, this is the last year of our contract with the sheriff's department, and, uh, evaluating services and costs. Um, Ms, Ms, I don't know if you guys remember Ms. Meyer, who was in here from Vernon Hills?
The one with my name, people call me Chris Meyer.
Oh, do they? Yeah, she was in here, she was having, uh, issues with Abbott, I had a, uh, I finally got ahold of Abbott, and I had a meeting with them today.
Oh, wow.
How was it?
It went real well, I'm going back out on site with them, they asked Ms. Meyer to be out there on site with them, so that they could turn around and begin corrective action, we're meeting with the contractor as well.
Nice.
So that's, uh, we're setting up the date for that, but I called Ms. Meyer, uh, she was very pleased that we were able to, uh, to assist her with-
Thanks for not being here tonight.
That's because she was very pleased that we were able to assist her, and I told her, I said, well, this is Long Grove, not Vernon Hills, and I kinda figured I'd take a shot at my counterpart over there on the way. Um, we're conducting a review of I T services, we had a consultant meet with us, uh, he is doing, currently doing work with the, uh, fire department. Uh, my concern and why we're at, why we sat down with this consultant was, we're looking to spend twenty thousand dollars on a server that, within a year or two, may not serve a purpose for us anymore, if we, for the cloud, especially with B S and A. This consultant said he is, uh, he has been successfully moving fire departments away from servers, and, uh, based on the number of users, are able to find another piece of equipment that's much less expensive. So I wanted to evaluate that, if we can save fifteen thousand dollars on a piece of equipment, uh, by teaching this consultant to take a look at it, so, um, but right now, we're just looking at it and, and trying to get a good inventory of what our, uh, technology assets are.
Make sure you have a reliable internet connection.
Yep.
Once you move to the cloud, without a good connection, you got nothing.
You might, willing to implement a B S and A in the cloud also, I don't know what aspects of B S and A, no.
Um, I'm conducting sales tax audit, working on that for the last, uh, about a week, week and a half, so I'm looking to see what we've got coming from the festivals, uh, that, that seems to be the issues where we have our most problems from, or potential problems from. Um, we're working through a request for an ex, the extension of the temporary use at twenty-seven twenty-seven, uh, Route fifty-three, the Geimer property. Village Board just approved eighteen months, about, about six, eight months ago on, on, uh, temporary use, but we're also looking at, as a tool to help, um, motivate development both at Geimer and other properties. So, uh, I've been working with Vic on that, as well as one of the, uh, business owners, and, uh, as well as the, uh, property owners. We had a meeting, uh, Jeff and I did, with the former deputy secretary for transportation for the state of Illinois, uh, he's a lobbyist for, for the QuickTrip company that was looking at the South fifteen. It, it seems, you don't count anything with I D A, but it seems they're making some serious headway about that fourth lake.
Could be a QuickTrip?
Could be, yeah.
Oh, wait, on like that, right?
Keep going, keep going.
I'm gonna start getting very concerned about lakes.
And then I, uh, I've reached out to, I've reached out to C M A P, the, uh, Metropolitan Agency for Planning, to potentially allocate a resource at little to no cost to us, I was tapping, tapping a relationship over there, uh, to help facilitate or start the development of a pathway plan. So, uh, so we can continue to move that project forward, and that's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, um, if there's no more, um, comments by anyone, uh, I would like a motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel matters. Moved by trustee Kritzmeyer?
Second.
Second by trustee Tanucci?
Yeah, roll call.
Trustee Kritzmeyer, aye. Trustee Tanucci?
Aye.
Trustee Borowski? Trustee Jamil?
Aye.
We have two parts. Okay, so stay for the first part.
Then you gotta give me a few minutes to-
No, we'll give you a few minutes, yeah, so you're gonna see, don't jump out a window, I'll lock up, yeah, off of the alarm, so. Did you get everyone's?
Yeah, they're both gone.
They're both gone, okay, got it.
They are. Really impressive.
Thanks, Jeff.
And we have a lot of key questions to answer the questions, handling on technical. Pretty excited.
How do I get rid of this one site here? How do I?
Do I need to do anything with that one?
Yeah. Remove, right? This one.
Yeah, I'll get we can have on the side.
Okay, so then, this is me right here. This is my picture. Yeah, so we should probably shut that one down. And then I'll just do. I'll do my video. When I come back, we'll. Hey Greg, we can take that one out there. Yeah, turn it out, just take it out.
On the other hand, though.
There you go, Mike. Congrats. All right, good luck on the rest of the process. Yep. Okay.
Hey Chris, good question. In your comment, check the plate, delete the data, were you doing a Cormanza thing from The Godfather? You said it, and I couldn't help, I couldn't help.
I was hoping.
But think of cannoli, right?
Okay, so, um...
Oh, no, shoot.
I am looking for a motion, um, to adjourn.
Wait, don't we have to vote, mail it in?
Motion to adjourn.
We don't have to.
No, nothing, we don't have to prove anything, so motion to adjourn.
So, Dr. Jamil.
Jamil, okay, and, uh, who, uh...
Second.
Second by trustee Tenucci, roll call.
Uh, Trust Jamil.
Aye.
Trust Tenucci.
Aye.
Trust Verozki.
Aye.
Trust Chris Martin.
Aye.
All right, meeting adjourned, goodnight, everyone.
Now, we can go.
Thank you, guys, I have to go tomorrow, I have a call.